All right, good evening, welcome everyone. I'd like to call to order our East Long Meadow School Committee. It's meeting, it's June 23rd, 2014, and it is 7:00 PM. I'm reminded that this meeting is being both audio and videotaped, and I just ask if anyone else in the audience is doing so, to just let us know. Thank you. All right, if we can all please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll do a roll call vote, starting on my left.
Elizabeth Marcy Voucher.
Gregory Thompson.
Rich Fuchero.
Deirdre Mayeau.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent Schools.
Del Fatsika.
Terry Oldjar, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathleen Salinger, Gordon Secretary.
Thank you. All right, before we go on to the approval of minutes, we just need to amend the agenda. And Mr. Fuchero, would you like to do that for me, please?
Yes, I'd like to move three agenda items up after the number four. So after number four, I'd like to add 7.1, 7.4, and 7.5.
Great, motions made.
Seconded.
And seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing that, that carries forward, five to zero. Great. So moving on, we have the approval of some minutes.
I make a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes of June 9th, 2014.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded, any further discussion? No? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, hearing that, carries forward, five to zero.
Salinger, unbelievable how you got all that information. You really are.
And then we also have some executive session meeting minutes.
Move to approve the June 9th executive session minute, meeting minutes.
Okay, motion made. I'll second. And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, that carries forward, five to zero. Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to our committee and subcommittee communications.
Beth. I don't have anything to add. Happy summer, thank God. You're done. Rev up for the fall. That's right.
I'm all set this evening as well. Thank you.
Two very quick items. Another sick week back, I think we had three or four this year, right?
We did.
I was concerned about that as far as the health of our staff. And secondly, Ms. Fatsika, phone informing, we had an athletic subcommittee meeting. We're gonna come back to the school committee in the late fall with a complete detailed report of our athletic budget for this past year. I think some hard decisions are facing us. And we'll kind of follow that decision-making into our budget process for the 2015, 2016 budget process. But we've got some hard decisions to make. Ms. Fatsika, if you want to add anything.
No, I'll just echo with Mr. Fuchero, said we had a very fruitful discussion last week. A lot of very good points were made, but there is some more research to be done, there is some more work to be done, and as Mr. Fuchero said, there will be a very detailed, concise presentation made in the fall prior to when we start developing our budget.
We look forward to that, I know that's important to all of us, so it'll be interesting.
We're not so forward to it, but...
You've gotta hear it, though.
Yes.
And I don't have anything to add, so with that, we can move on. This is just the next part, it's the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none, we're gonna move on to our next part, which is our amendment. So we have 7.1, which is the use of the East Long Meadow High School building request from Happy Wasteland, Inc. So if you guys just wanna come up, come take a seat, feel free to sit at the tables.
Kelly Henshaw, and I don't know if we've met your colleague.
Jake Holzberg, the writer director.
Okay.
Thank you for having us tonight.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So just by way of introduction, in your packet, you see a cover memo from Dr. Flanagan, giving a little bit of an introduction to a film that the Happy Wasteland Production Company is making, Heroes Don't Come Home.
Correct.
And they've requested to use the high school to do some filming for that movie on August 4th. But I think Ms. Henshaw is gonna give us some more information on that, and possibly answer any questions you may have.
Sure. Would you like to know more about the film first?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. So it's about two young boys who grew up in a small town like East Long Meadow or Wilberham. They grew up together, did everything together. Their fathers were Beth's friends. Senior year of high school, one of their fathers died in the World Trade Center attacks. And they both vowed at that point to go to war. But when push comes to shove, one of the boys ended up going, and one did not. So the movie itself is about how their friendship was torn apart by war, what their families faced when they went to war, and how they came back together in the end.
But don't ruin the ending. Give it away yet.
It doesn't tell everything. And I did write up a letter as well, how we are going to use the space, why we are making the film, and our future plans as well. Would I be able to hand that out to you?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Ms. Henshaw.
Yes.
Is it just the building that's gonna be in the film, or any employees, or students, etc.?
As of right now, we are not requesting any employees to be using.
Well, I'm a high school principal.
As for students, as of right now, we don't have any East Long Meadow students for the film planned. We are using surrounding towns of graduated high school members. Example, Chicopee. We have a Chicopee High teacher here, so we're using some of his previous students within the film. But we're very open to if an opportunity, if East Long Meadow students are interested in being in it, then at that point, but it's, we don't have the plan right now.
We do have a write-up from our memorandum of understanding from our attorney.
Right. Ms. Henshaw and I have discussed the memo of understanding that our attorney's drafted, and we've looked over, as well as our attorneys have looked over, their release. And I think with this letter, probably with the school committee's vote to approve, we could sign and help make the filming happen on August 4th.
Great. And I do have that signed copy that you had sent me earlier, Mr. Smith. Did you want that as well?
Why don't you hold on to that for now? We can figure out, once the school committee has a chance to vote.
You got it.
How we sign, dot the i's and cross the t's.
Very good.
Is August 4th still the date that we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
I believe so.
And from 9:30 to 2:00, still the schedule?
Correct.
Will that be enough time to get everything done that you need to be...
We hope. Anything in film is always pertaining to our actors. If we need to be out by 2, we'll be out by 2.
So, we good?
Yeah. If anyone else has anything, I'm okay. We're ready to vote to allow them.
I would move that we allow Happy Wasteland Incorporated to use the East Long Meadow High School building on August 4th.
Okay, motion. Motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, hearing none, that carries forward, five to zero. Good luck.
Thank you.
Fine, hope it goes well, and that, you get it all done in that timeframe.
Yeah, thank you.
What I can do is, I will give you a call tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And so we can get all our paperwork signed and ready for you.
Very good.
And then figure out how we get it all to you.
And do you want this copy that I gave you?
Sure. Why don't I take that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you for knowing.
Thank you so much.
Take care, good luck.
Thank you very much. Want to come around this way?
Thank you very much, you made it happen. So, we were really nervous.
My mother says love.
We have a great day for schools for that.
That's right, exactly. Especially if it's 9/11, so.
You'll have to let us know if it had any changes from 2000 when you were here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda we're having is 7.4, which is the certificate of attainment for two students. So Dr. Flanagan, if you'd like to come up and join us.
Thank you. We have two certificate of attainments for two students. One is a Valley West student, and one is a student who came to us, I believe, last year from out of the country. So each of these students have met the graduation requirements from East Long Meadow High School. You have the criteria list in front of you, and we are asking that, with your approval, that we can give them the certificate of attainment.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, with all the information that you have, and...
You should probably take them one at a time, I would think.
Yep.
So who's student number one?
Can't give it to me.
No, nothing, David. Which one's student number one?
So we can look at a student who came to us from out of the country?
Is student number one?
Yep.
Okay. I move that we approve the certificate of attainment for student number one.
Okay, motions made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, that carries forward, five to zero. And then we have the second student, who is from Valley West.
I'm making a motion to approve the certificate of attainment for student number two.
Okay, motions made. I'll second. And seconded by Beth, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, hearing none, that carries forward, five to zero. And Dr. Flanagan, you don't have to leave, you can stay seated right there. We did this all for you. It's my daughter's birthday, so.
Well, how do we take her recess?
All right, so we're gonna move on to 7.5, which is IT Space at East Long Meadow High School. So Ryan, if you'd like to join her, we can discuss this.
So we have Dr. Flanagan and Mr. Quimby here, and as you all know, we've been in somewhat of a space challenge at the town hall, and there've been a lot of different options presented, but at the moment, I don't think any one of those options have been the solution that people are seeking. So we've been working, we've always worked very closely with the IT department, and we started to discuss the space issue, and the possibility of having the IT department, at least part of the IT department, I think the servers would still stay at the town hall, come to the high school. And I think Dr. Flanagan and Mr. Quimby might be able to give you more of the details in terms of how we would utilize an existing computer room that we think we can collapse and make it a mobile lab, and then use that space for the IT office.
So, give you a little history on the space variety. You know, I started 14 years ago for the town. We were in the server room, you know, we had like five servers in one room, small air conditioner. Since then, you know, we're over 60 servers, a lot of them are virtualized. We had a separate office space that was, used to be the executive secretary's office. They gave us that when there was two employees. Since then, with the merger with the schools, as far as IT goes, we now have six employees. We're really, really tight in the space that we have. We've been fighting for more space for about six years. It's, has been challenging, to say the least, with different plans from every person that I've talked to. We've had some get as far as town meeting that had no action, and you know, other ones that died before they got to any executive board. I think now, we were trying to go to the old fire station, that didn't really seem cost-effective. So, you know, I went to Gordon and said, you know, what do you got for us? You know, we're strapped, you know, we ended up at the high school, doing a little research on our end. In the past year, we had about 5,500 work orders, 21% of those came from the high school. You know, that's across everything, all of our responsibilities.
Yeah, and we're, I mean, I think for the high school, it's a huge win for us, because as you know, we are just going through the Apple migration with our teachers next year, and having them in such close proximity, and as we hopefully move to a one-to-one, I think is a really great idea, because it'll give us that easy access to their services, and we'll be able to respond to issues, I think, in a much more timely manner. So for us, we're very excited about it.
I know one of the challenges, as I'm sure it's not unfamiliar to you guys, is the electrical requirements that IT would need. 216 definitely would need air conditioning. I don't know if you've ever been on the second floor in the summer, but it's pretty brutal.
So there's no air conditioning in there right now?
There is, but the unit right now is not.
Right. It's just a window unit where we would install a, like Mr. Slims, or a split-unit AC unit, an inverter-driven unit that would, you know, we met with the electrical inspector, he came out with the building inspector, and the town's electrician, they looked at it. He gave it his blessing, you know, he says he's not 100% comfortable with it, but with the way that the loads would change, because we would be more of a load in the summer when the rest of the building would have next to no load. And then, also, we would be taking, obviously, 216, the computer lab offline, and replacing that with a mobile cart, which would be a much less of a draw, as well as removing all the teacher computers, replacing those with laptops, which draw much less, 140 watts versus like 65 watts.
Oh, okay. Anyone have any questions?
Where is 216, where is it exactly?
It's second floor, it's the first classroom on the right.
Okay, in front of the school.
Front of the school.
It used to be the server room for the town, a million years ago.
And so where would you park, and where would you come in?
Where the IT staff used to park, in the back corner over here.
The visitor parking area, or the back door?
This back door, the one over by the custodian's garage.
Oh, this back door. Back door, back door.
Yeah.
Was that where you come in, like through the custodial area, or the side entrance with the...
There was a side entrance. You know, I usually park over here, but my tech said park here and coming through that door.
And there's enough parking back there?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
We actually restripped back there.
We did.
The kids might be standing in front of the door, or would they cold coming out? Now, the mobile lab, you're gonna be able to take whatever's there, and it'll be, I think it makes sense, be more easily accessible to move a whole classroom, just have the cart go in.
Right, and the other advantage is, we're trying to move all our math teachers on one floor, so that's going to free up a classroom to allow, you know, Mr. Freeman, his AP Comp Sci class, they'll now be on the second floor, so all of our math teachers will be on the second floor, which is another benefit.
And you feel you can give up that space?
Yeah, again, it was a mobile, it was a computer lab, and we're not losing the computer lab, we're actually, you know, we're moving toward that direction of mobile devices, so it actually makes sense for us to do that.
Now, how big is that room compared to the space you're in at town hall?
It's about 60% larger. But with that, we also have our workshop that we have at the top of the stairs, on the other side of the building, and then some other storage space that we try to get throughout the high school.
Currently, they still have a, you know, where the school department IT office was, the top of the stairs there. That's still a workshop.
Yeah, workshop slash storage.
They still have stuff to do.
I don't know, I think it's, I like it, I also feel that maybe, not right away, but in the future, we can even incorporate students, like we do with LCAT, and it could be a win-win, certainly.
Student help desk.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
See what it looks like to run town.
I like the idea, because it's shown how two departments can work together to problem-solve. Everybody knows space is tight, so I'm in favor of it. Right, it's gonna be beneficial for the town, you know, us being, or me, being the most vocal and loudest and annoying, putting storage everywhere, getting us out of there. I think that'll help the town, kind of silence the town hall issue.
So does the board of selectmen, they're on board with the idea?
That's my next stop.
Okay. Will you tell them we think it's, I think it's pretty good?
Well, so it certainly would be subject to that, obviously.
To their approval, right.
Okay, great.
And Mr. Quimby, the first day of school, I mean, it would be very prudent to have that mobile cart going, because Dr. Flanagan would be in a very difficult political position if there's one less lab the first day of school. So you pretty sure you have that moving the first day of school?
We will, and honestly, that's probably less of my concerns, as far as having the 260 other laptops for teachers. I don't know if you wanna back me up on that one.
That's my concern, yeah.
Well, it's mine, too.
It's all gonna work out.
So this could be pulled off with, you know, in the timeframe, by the time the kids get back here, by the time the teachers get back here and everything.
Yeah, there's small details we have to work out, you know, with DPW, Blink Facilities,
see if we can get their staff involved, if not, you know, IT would hire an electrician to get this stuff done.
And we have some software issues, we have to take the software that's on the existing lab and move them to the mobile, so there's those kinds of things that can be done.
It's all doable.
All doable.
Okay, well, you know, we can take a vote on this if we're done discussing it, so if someone would like to make a motion.
I move that we invite the IT department to use space, 216 potentially, for the IT department.
Okay, motion's made.
Seconded.
And seconded by Rich, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, that carries forward, five to zero. Okay, well, good luck on your...
Let's staff.
Welcome. Mr. Quimby, can you stay for the next item? Do you mind, it's five minutes?
Want to stay up here?
No, no, that's fine.
Just to stay and listen. Okay, so now, we move, okay, we're gonna go to 5.1.1, which is our discussion of MCAS and PARC assessments.
Okay. In your packet, you have a informational packet, I guess is the best way to say, and this is a combination of both information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as some of our own information from our spring pilots, where we had the PARC piloted in a number of different grade levels, and we had our students take a survey, just give us some feedback on what they thought of the PARC testing. So with your approval, I wanted to just walk you through some of the key points of this, unless you want me to go page by page.
Yeah, 'cause I don't have that, so if you could just go...
You know what, it's in a separate...
It's in a separate job box.
Yeah, it's in a separate job box.
Yeah, it's a separate document. All right. I'm gonna give you a moment to find it.
Yeah, you can continue.
Okay. All right, so basically, a couple key points, some of which we discussed earlier in the fall, as we were talking about the pilot. The last few years, we've had shifts in our standards, as we've gone more towards the Common Core state standards. Basically, what those shifts have created, if you think first of the literacy standards, is that there's an equal emphasis now in our standards on literary and informational texts. Some of the review over the years has shown that we were dealing with literary texts 90 to 95, almost to 99% of the time, and so we're shifting away to looking at multiple texts, and having our students become more proficient in reading multiple texts. There's also a shift in reading and writing and speaking, grounding our points in the texts that's been provided. There's also been changes in how we respond to texts in writing, so those are on that, did you find it, Ms. Marcy Voucher?
Yes.
Okay. So those are all in that first box there on page one. The shifts you see in math is, over the last few years, is that we actually, at each grade level, focus on fewer standards, but we're trying to go in further depth, and then build good progression from those standards each year. And so those are some of the changes we've seen. Another point that's on that second page, is that we've actually shifted, we being Massachusetts, to some of these new standards back in 2010, and we've been doing the work across the state to try to align fully to the Common Core state standards. So that work's been going on. As we go forward with state assessment, one of the key points, as you go through all this information, is that Massachusetts will go to what they're calling a new generation assessment, whether it be PARC or some other type of assessment, they are going to move in the next few years to what they're calling a new generation type of assessment, that gets at this type of skill-building for students, you know, looking at, okay, have they been able to develop these skills, where they can look at a variety of texts, and then pull from those texts evidence that, where they can put together a coherent written piece, or put together a coherent oral piece. That's where assessment's going, and the PARC assessment right now gives our teachers and our students an opportunity to look at that type of new generation assessment, if you will. The other key piece that we need to know is that the graduation competency determination, MCAS for high school students, is not going away before 2018. So on the high school level, our students, specifically in 10th grade, will still be taking the MCAS competency determination.
For how long, Gordon?
At least through 2018. And the science right now, MCAS, is one that our students will continue to take, because there is no science assessment in PARC right now. So those are a couple key points. The, I guess the motivational part from the state, if we were to go towards PARC, is that they are holding districts harmless, if you will, with accountability information. If you choose PARC for next year, you still will get the state reporting the results for the individual student, for the family, for the district as a whole, from PARC, as we've gotten from MCAS over the years. This year with the pilot, we did not get that. Next year, they will have that same type of reporting. However, if a school system has chosen PARC, and has not hit their targets for next year on PARC, and they have a pretty elaborate crosswalk as to how they're gonna determine the targets that were set in MCAS, cross it over to PARC. Very similar to how the college board looks at ACT and SAT scores, and how they make those comparisons, very similar crosswalk. What, districts who are early adopters, if you will, making a decision by June 30th, they will be held harmless if perchance they don't hit their targets in the first year of PARC. So with all of that said, we did discuss as a leadership team, it has been somewhat of a crunched and fast-moving situation, because we just on Thursday went to a Department of Elementary and Secondary Education informational session on this. Friday, I was able to include it as part of our leadership team discussion, and so now Monday, you're having a chance to not only review the information, but have a discussion on it. The leadership team did think that a recommendation that would be good for the district and for the students would be to possibly utilize the PARC assessment in a paper and pencil mode next year for grades three through eight, and then keep MCAS for grades nine through 11. After a lot of discussion, most specifically around whether we were ready to take on an online assessment, and in your packet, you'll see that some of the guidelines are, you take your largest class for a given school who might be testing, and do you have one computer per every two students in that class? That would be a minimum. And in our elementary schools, at the moment, we don't have that, that's not the case. The other part that we discussed around whether you go online or paper and pencil for next year, was as much as if you look at the results, our students really did enjoy taking the online assessment, they liked the atmosphere of taking the PARC pilot online. If we're not utilizing online assessment and technology on a daily basis across multiple classrooms, the recommendation, this comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, is go paper and pencil until you are doing that, where you can see, and you're using, it's embedded in your culture, you're using online assessment, you're using technology on a daily basis across multiple classrooms. So I think the leadership team felt that was probably a good recommendation, and given, and I think Mr. Quimby probably could speak to this as well, given some of the trials and tribulations we had with trying to keep the online pilot going, most of it on Pearson's end, not East Long Meadows end, we actually had it set up pretty well. Mr. Quimby had an incredible structure set up for our students to test online, but that frustration between the school and their tech help, I think that plus the fact that we don't right now meet their baseline recommendation for computers, it'd probably be wise to go paper and pencil.
Okay, this just burns me. I feel if they're still working on a new generation type of assessment, do we really, we are responsible, whether we like it or not, for having our students pass the MCAS exam, period. Right now, they're telling us, we have until, we know they're gonna have it until 2018.
Right.
They may come back next year and say they're gonna have it until 2019, or 2020. They don't know where they're going with this. They have not practiced, they don't even have the results yet back from this past year.
They don't have the results from the pilot.
For me personally, I'd be like, you go play with other states and other, I feel it's using our kids as guinea pigs. I mean, let's keep with the MCAS, let them refine this, and then teach them all the good things that the Common Core has, and prepare them for this for the future. But I think by not testing our kids for the MCAS and having them become comfortable with that assessment, and then this falls through and they come up with some other assessment, are we hurting our children in the long run? What's your opinion?
Certainly, if they're not taking the MCAS, they're not taking the exact tests that they might be taking as they hit the high school. However, I think the experience they would have in taking the PARC or whatever next generation assessment comes down, it's actually going to be a more enriching experience. They're going to be asked to do more things than they've done before. If you looked at some of our results, it was roughly fifty, fifty-one percent of our students were saying that the assessment was actually harder than their classwork. And so we're continuing to build towards aligning to all these new standards and make sure that our units are providing experience that are that enriching.
See, my thoughts are, there is something coming. It may not be PARC, but we have to get, especially on the elementary level, we've got to get them ready to start thinking in terms of whatever, it's going to, it may not be PARC, but it's going to look like PARC. It's going to be something around with those critical thinking elements embedded in it. And that's why we have to start training, I don't want to, training's the wrong word, but exposing the younger kids that could be in this building, in the high school, by the time PARC hits, as opposed to, and I respect what you're saying, Beth, but we have to get them ready. We have to do our part.
I'm not saying that to get them ready. Get them ready. Teach them the goods. I'm just saying, when it comes to brass tacks and we have to test these kids, give them the MCAS. Whatever we teach them to get them ready for the PARC, they're going to be able to pass the MCAS.
But they need to be ready, because the PARC, PARC looks different than MCAS.
It does.
There's different elements that are key to it. They need to get ready for that. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, I know. I just.
For me, it comes down to the timeframe of everything, that they're asking us to make these decisions so quickly. I have a hard time with that, because, again, I just feel that the kid's getting used to new standards in the classroom, new ways of doing things, and now it's, oh, we're going to now give you a different form of test. But then again, that new form of test is based on the new standard, right, the Common Core standard, and the way it's being taught and the alignment.
They could throw it out in two years and start again, and then their kids aren't ready for the MCAS when they hit the high school.
It's, I don't think our students will not be prepared for the MCAS when they hit the high school. I mean, I think we'll continue to, we have a good track record of having our students develop the skills that they need to pass the MCAS as they hit ninth and 10th grade now.
I guess it's a comfort level at that point.
Right.
You want them to be comfortable going into the most important tests that they're going to take, because they don't want to get a certificate of attainment, they want to get a diploma.
Correct.
And I know that they're going to pass it regardless of whether or not we give them the PARC over the next few years and just leave the high school kids with the MCAS. But I feel, and I'll end it with that, I think we should let the state play elsewhere and give our kids what we know they need for now, and enrich them with all the stuff that'll make them ready for the PARC, just don't give it to them. That would make you sense.
Just to follow up on the timeline, so that we're very clear, if you, if the school committee wants East Long Meadow Public Schools to become an early adopter, we have to make a decision by June 30th. If not, you can make a decision by October 1st. The motivation to be an early adopter is that the state will guarantee that what you choose will be what you get, such as if you were to choose, you know, PARC, paper and pencil, grades three through eight, and MCAS in grades nine through 11, they guarantee that will happen. There will be materials ordered, you will have what you want. What they tell you is, if you wait until October 1st, then there is no guarantee, you can still put in your request, you know, if it, again, if you were to put in the request for PARC, grades three through eight, paper and pencil, they can't guarantee they'll have those materials. So you might.
Can they guarantee you get the MCAS?
They will guarantee you get the MCAS. Yeah. So, you know, so I don't want you to think that you have to make a decision absolutely tonight. You can make a decision tonight. I think a lot of districts around us are in similar circumstances, such as, I believe, West Springfield's having their discussion and possible vote tomorrow night. Long Meadow might be having a public forum on it tonight. I believe Agawam may have already voted, and.
Wilberham did. And Ludlow, did you say?
Ludlow, I believe, went MCAS.
And Wilberham?
Wilberham went PARC.
And Wilberham went PARC?
They went PARC. Right now.
But they're all, they're all discussing it within the last two weeks.
Do you have any votes, Frank?
Across the state, let me just throw this out there, across the state, and this is as of five o'clock tonight, just districts across the state that are voting, it's forty-four that are going to PARC, forty-five are staying with MCAS, so it's evenly split. It's not, it's not the entire, but these are districts, and I'm getting this information off the listserv.
There's MASC.
MASC listserv. So as districts are voting, they're posting it, so.
So I could wait, because I think there's still information that's going to come out, especially with all these discussions that are taking place. Someone, somewhere, may come up with this great point that none of us are thinking of right now. So I see value perhaps in postponing. I know we wouldn't be guaranteeing, but some of us may be wavering anyway in terms of which ones we want. So for me, I don't, I don't mind waiting, but I'm only one of five, so.
I think you're being bullies. Oh, you might or might not get what you want. That's being a bully. I mean, it really is. It's making us push to say, oh, we better get what we want, we better do it now.
Right.
And that's pushing more schools to take the PARC, because they're going to be afraid they're not going to get what they want.
Two points that, that will probably remain the same. One is that MCAS, nine through 11, correct?
Right.
And the leadership team recommended three through eight, paper.
Paper and pencil.
Or PARC.
For PARC, okay.
Maintain MCAS, nine through 11. Institute PARC, three through eight, using a paper and pencil test next year.
So current seventh and eighth graders, who will be required, I believe, to pass the MCAS, will not get the MCAS in ninth and 10th grade, or I mean, seventh and eighth grade.
Seventh and eighth.
And then they'll have to take it in ninth and 10th grade, but they won't have the experience in seventh and eighth grade, and possibly not even this past year, too.
They'll have experience with a pretty challenging state assessment that's based on the Common Core State Standards.
I know it's a harder test, and I know if we're teaching the kids the good things in the test, that they will do fine on the MCAS. I'm just talking about making them comfortable.
And where's the value, or I know we get data back from MCAS, we've got years of MCAS data to look at, but now if we're going to jump to PARC, we now don't have a baseline data, right, as they're.
Well, they feel that they do have a pretty good crosswalk, so that they'd be able to, such as we have composite performance index target that we, as a district and schools and certain grade levels have to hit, or they ask us to hit.
Right.
Though as you get into the accountability system, they feel that they have the crosswalk to put that same accountability system on the PARC results.
And we're currently, we have status in the accountability system now? Is that the difference?
Right.
So if those grades don't participate in MCAS, then it's kind of a doesn't count year? Is that how that works?
No, it's still, you're still going to get all that accountability information. That's where they'll use that crosswalk. What they will do, at least for next year, they will guarantee that you're held harmless. So if you don't hit your targets for, in MCAS, and you're a Level One school.
Right.
It may drop you to a Level Two school. If you choose PARC for grades three through eight, and using their crosswalk, we see the student results, and they feel that we haven't hit our target in different places, even though it normally, in a normal year, would drop us from Level One to Level Two, next year, they would hold that harmless. So our accountability status, what they're saying, would be held harmless. You'd still have the information. They're not saying that they're not going to provide the information, not only to the district, but like they always do, to the media and so forth. So all the information would be out there, it just doesn't shift you in terms of your accountability status.
Is one of our schools is a Level Two school now, or?
All our schools, with the exception of high school, are Level Two schools.
All of them.
High school's a Level One school.
Is there anything, foreseeable future from now till October 1st, that might help us more? Any workshops or conferences in the planning stages?
I'm sure that there will be other workshops that come up. The workshops, we participated in a conference call with multiple districts across the state, that was in May, and then we went to an informational workshop that the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative hosted. You know, there may be more of those, similar to earlier in the year at Minnetoga, they hosted a night on the Common Core and the PARC assessment. Same two individuals from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education seem to be doing it, Bob Bickerton and I think it's Maureen LaCroix. And, you know, I've seen them present now two or three times. So I think what, I don't know about workshops, but the information to Mr. Thompson's point, you may get more information about what other towns are doing. You know, roughly ninety districts, it sounds like, have made a decision. We may know tomorrow, you know, if a couple other districts did it tonight.
Wilberham, Handon Wilberham voted against PARC.
They did?
I just looked at it on the reminder.
Okay.
MASC is not planning anything prior to October 1st, because I already talked to Glenn about that.
Have they taken a stance on the issue?
Probably not.
No.
There are some, I do have a meeting next week in Marlboro to go about the resolutions, and I think I've heard that there are two resolutions possibly aimed at PARC, whether or not they make it through or not. I don't know yet. Once I have that information, I'll bring it back to you.
Well, we have a current year's PARC, what the kids did this year, how well the children, the students did this year by October 1st.
We're not going to get results on that.
You won't get those results.
You won't get results on the pilot.
You won't, yes, making me happy. I know. I mean.
We'll get results next year if we take it, but they won't release individual nor school results on the pilot.
So how do they know that there's value to the test if no one has the results yet?
That's the argument.
They have results.
Right.
Are they making the case that there's value to the test, or has there not been a large enough population to take the test to really know it's?
Actually, they've been not only testing or piloting in Massachusetts, but they've been piloting in numerous states across the country. So I'm assuming they're bringing all that information back to see, okay, how is this test holding up?
Right.
I mean, certainly, Massachusetts has been looked at as one of the leaders in the nation, and not only in their standards, but also their assessment, the MCAS, was and still is a very good assessment, but it is going to change. They are going to, you know, regardless of whether it's PARC or something else, they are moving in the direction of changing it. It's not going to be the same type of assessment that we've come to know.
Now, just to put the question out there, I know I've discussed it with you already, but with PARC, I'm curious how it might be for a student with special needs or special education, what kind of accommodations for them, or if it's changing rapidly, is it going to be a harder test for them to take compared to the MCAS?
Actually, I think, once we get to an online version, which is not the recommendation at the moment, because we don't have the equipment, I think it actually will be easier, because the accommodations will be built right into the computer software. When that student logs on with a specific code number, those assessments, or excuse me, those modifications will turn on. So let's say you need someone to read aloud, that the student would have that, we would have headphones for that student, and the student can work it right on the computer. They would also have other accommodations built right into the computer. But the same accommodations on the paper and pencil tests that students receive now with MCAS, they would also receive with PARC, yeah.
Well, I respect the leadership team making their decision, but I don't know if I see any value in making a decision tonight on it. I don't know if anyone else feels that way, if you want to just keep it as a discussion and maybe get some more feelers out by talking to other parents, other people in the community to get some other ideas out there, and maybe start to see what some other local towns are doing. I don't know how others feel about that decision.
I think we may end up with the leadership team recommending, but I don't see any, I like what Mr. Thompson said, I think we should take more time, make a decision in our second meeting in September.
I know, it just seems rushed. It does.
And especially since the leadership team just did this on Friday, and they're coming to us today, it gives us a little bit more time to take it in and have a little bit more thought on it.
Just have to remember that there's no guarantee then, what that really means for the state, I guess we'll have to see. But, so whatever the decision may be come October 1st, it may or may not be what we get.
But only for that year.
Oh, that's my next question.
That doesn't mean for the rest of our lives, we'll never.
No, 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 no. This is for next, so let's say, just to play that out, let's say we did go with the recommendation, and so we're looking for PARC in grades three through eight.
Right.
At some point, the Department of Education would have to let us know, okay, East Long Meadow, we don't have the PARC materials, we don't have enough PARC materials for to make that happen for you, because you were not an early adopter, and so in grades three through eight, you're getting MCAS, and you're getting MCAS grades.
Oh, well, then you should have thought, they'll get it, I'm telling you right now, they will get the information we need if we choose PARC, because they want the kids to take the PARC, and they will find what they need.
And you may, you may be entirely accurate.
Aye.
I just wanted to make sure you have the information.
Well, what will happen the following year? Will they give us a choice again?
They'll develop the same criteria?
Yeah, I think we're probably going to have to work with the state each year to say, because we may at some point want to say, okay, we'd like to do online testing.
Right, right.
And so, well, the question I asked on Thursday was, can we make that determination each year? What I said was, I said, we haven't discussed this as a school committee or a leadership team.
Right.
But in going through the pilot, my thought would be that maybe we're not ready to go fully online. And so I said, can we make that decision each year? And the gentleman who was presenting, Bob Bickerton, said that yes, we could.
The decision to go paper or online?
Paper.
PARC, no matter what, but.
Yeah, I mean, he obviously was an advocate for PARC.
Right.
So you go back to paper even after going to online, is what you're saying?
After the pilot.
Yeah.
For next year, our recommendation would be stay paper until we've built our inventory equipment. And I think next year's going to be a critical year where we're infusing a lot more technology. We're doing some training right now, this week, with some of our teacher leaders, and if that takes off and our staff really starts to integrate technology more on a daily basis into their teaching, then, you know, students will be much better prepared to be taking an online assessment.
All right. So we'll leave it as a discussion and come back and revisit this in late September when we have to give our final.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move on to 5.2.1, the New England Dairy and Food Grant.
Okay. This actually is a grant that Laurie Paul, our Food Services Director, applied for through the New England Dairy and Food Council, and just recently was awarded this grant, and I think the photo op, Mrs. Olajares and Mrs. Paul were in the photo op accepting the big check. So this grant is going to support a smoothie program at the high school.
I know she might just have it.
And so I think they got up to possibly, it was May, I believe, when we were awarded the grant, and so we got it up and running in May through the end of school, and we got close to 400 smoothies a week.
Yeah.
Good.
Wow. They really did. When did they serve those smoothies?
During lunch.
Oh, okay.
So we have to accept the grant.
This will be the formal acceptance of the grant.
So I move that we accept the grant, the amount of $1,584 from New England Dairy and Food Council.
Great, motion's made.
Second.
Second in my bill. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those pose nay. Hearing none, that carries forward, 5-0. Okay, we're moving on to 6.1, Policy ADDA, Background Checks. This is our second reading.
Okay. This is our second reading, and we've slightly revised the policy. After our first discussion, we did go back out and not only talk to the LPVAC schools, but also Mrs. Celeste got on the listserv and checked in with other districts on the MASC listserv. Most seem to be going the way we've now revised the sentences at the end of that first paragraph, which is that if you have overnight travel, where you may have parent or volunteer chaperoning, that would be when we would require the National Fingerprint Criminal Background Check. Otherwise, our school volunteers, subcontractors, so these would be our volunteers not only in the classroom, but also our volunteers that might go on a day field trip.
Right.
We would like the quarry checks to continue in those cases and differentiate in that way.
He, too, apparently spoke, were much happier this way than they.
So the sentence prior to the red sentence, the long, the beginning with the school committee superintendent and principal, does that still give the ability for any one of those groups or individuals to mandate the registration on the, through the database, National Fingerprint Data Database, doesn't it? So if the principal says, Mrs. May is coming into this class next Thursday, I would like her to get the fingerprinting done, or she's not allowed in. Are we giving them the ability to do that with that sentence?
What we're saying is that if we feel there's a circumstance where we should ask someone to, you know, maybe it's if you take subcontractor, if that subcontractor's going to have more.
Volunteers in there.
Right, right.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It basically is just. It basically is just giving the option that if the school committee or superintendent or principal felt, hey, this is a really unique situation, and maybe it would be wise for us, you know, there's going to be much more contact, indirect or unsupervised contact with students in this case, that I would recommend that they go for the fingerprint and criminal background check.
So would that something be like the woman who did slime? Maybe.
So my point to that, though, is I'm less comfortable with that sentence than I was with the prior, prior policy, because at least with the prior policy, it was either it was required or it was not required. This is giving an individual, superintendent or principal, the ability to mandate, could be for every volunteer, if they decide, well, every volunteer in my class needs to have this, I'm not comfortable with that at all. My whole point to this was that it wasn't going to be required of volunteers who wanted to come in our schools. So that would be my recommendation, would be to remove that whole sentence, the sentence prior to the red sentence.
Can we just put, maybe that it can come back to the school committee for review?
I don't want to be the one to decide that you need the fingerprinting.
You're right, you're right.
Because you're going, but she does not, and then...
And we'd wonder then, too, if there's a, like, thinking somebody's just not, doesn't particularly care for an individual, if they might target them.
Right, that you don't have to give a reason, you just say...
Or they just get, a principal at a certain school that just makes everybody do it, and that's exactly what we're trying to prohibit. I am trying to prohibit it. So I think there's too much grade for that sentence to be there to say, well, may require, because it doesn't say require, may require.
I don't...
May obtain.
So they may obtain, so that means they'll have to mandate you do it, or you won't be allowed in the building.
What if we just took down, out volunteers and just left subcontractors or labor? They could be...
Let me, I hear the other side, I like this point, I mean, I would, there may be a situation where the superintendent, we, principal feels that they would like to have...
What would that be, for example, though?
I don't know.
Somebody look shady, you know, profiling people, you look a little suspicious, I'm going to run into the national database. I'm not being sarcastic.
No, that's...
But that's what I'm getting at, so now I want to volunteer in the school. The policy that I wanted to create doesn't mandate that because I volunteer in the school, I need to get fingerprinted. However, the principal who's standing at the door says, Mr. Thompson needs to get his cell fingerprinted. We've given the permission of the principal because we allow it in our policy, we're doing exactly what I was hoping we wouldn't do, is allow that to happen.
Right. I didn't read it that way, that's interesting.
See, I feel like that's what our administrators do every day, is they make decisions like this.
They have their decisions.
And I think it's a reasonable, I mean, I'm going to...
But what if you get a principal that their focus is do it for everybody, right? And we would allow that under this policy, because that's just, that's how they believe. But we're the policymakers of this district, so if we don't believe that same thing, we're allowing them to do that, that's not our intention with the policy, but because that's something that they hold dear and that they want to do strict, we, there's not much we can say about it because we gave them the opportunity to do that. And it certainly could happen, I could foresee that.
I think it could happen. I think, though, our administrators work very closely together, and so a decision like that usually gets not only discussion, but also questions all the way up to me, where we talk about those kind of things, so that it's not a sort of impromptu or an isolation, isolating type decision, you know, because we don't want to, we don't want to have a situation where one school's doing something totally different from the other four schools.
Would make it where they have to refer back to you, like, if they have a concern, they have to the superintendent?
You're afraid it will be taken advantage of, or you have discrepancy...
If our policy is that it's now mandated for volunteers, which is the policy that I'd like to create, I'm not speaking for the rest of the committee.
Right.
Then to say, and I'm not even putting personalities in it, because I, all the administrators, you know, Gordon, I don't foresee, you know, all of a sudden, all right, we prove this policy, you're going to do it anyway because you want to do it. I'm not saying that, I'm taking personalities out of it.
Right.
If at any time personalities change, it can happen. So why would we create a policy that would allow it to happen when we, I think, don't want it to happen, I guess, is my point. But we would allow the individual to make that decision, which we are.
Well, so you would want to see the sentence eliminated?
Yes.
So there's no way to revise it that would allow for any sort of...
Discretion by an individual?
Yes, yes.
I don't want discretion by an individual. It's either the policy or it's not the policy, I think. Otherwise, what's the point of the policy, other than here, it's yours to deal with, you figure it out.
Right, because you either have direct or indirect contact with students.
And I'm not trying to prohibit anyone from volunteering in the school, so, but it could happen because someone, that's just their thing, they believe strongly in it, and people certainly do, I'm sure they do.
Right.
So you just get that personality, and then they basically lock you out of X school unless you submit to the, to the national database.
All right, so what do we do here? We...
Well, you certainly can revise the policy, it is your policy, so...
Strike that and then see how it goes for the first year, and then if we feel there were a couple situations, then maybe we can revisit it.
I just don't know what those situations would be. Like, somebody who's a little suspicious comes to the door, then we should be making individual decisions and not subjecting the fingerprinting just because it looks suspicious, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, I come in from work sometimes to schools, and I'm sure I'm not, I didn't change for this meeting, you know, it's...
Well, it would be like profiling.
It's like profiling.
We're not going to be allowed to do that anyway.
I know.
So why give the carte blanche for any individual to say, well, we know it's a policy, but we also have the ability to override the policy, which we're actually giving, I think.
See, I respect what you're saying, but I don't read it that way. And that's, you know, that's, it's healthy, it's healthy discussion.
It is.
But I just don't, the intent of the policy...
Does an individual principal have the ability to require you to walk in the building and say, you need to have fingerprint, right?
I understand that, but I just don't, that's not the intent of the policy.
But that's what it says, though.
I know, but that's not the intent. The intent was just to come up with something that covers volunteers, and every district is modifying it. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, because I understand what you're trying to prevent. They didn't, when MASC created this policy, they didn't look at it that way. When it was presented to me, I didn't look at it that way.
I could see removing the word volunteer from that, but leaving it for subcontractors and laborers, but removing the word volunteer. I just, I guess I feel I'd like the principal to know that if they just see someone coming in and doing renovations and they're not, and they're just a little bit, that they have the right to ask that.
Well, Springfield, for example, everybody that walks through the door, everybody.
I wholeheartedly disagree with that policy.
I know, I do, too.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that is what they...
And it's going to get them in the end, they're not going to be happy with that policy.
Right.
But maybe they will, but...
But you're also looking at a district that's probably four times the size of us that has more, they have more people coming into the building every day.
I just look at it as a civil liberties issue, and I think we're overstepping and overreaching, and just because the technology is there doesn't mean we should subject everyone who wants to be in a public building to be guilty until they're proven innocent. I think that's just fundamentally wrong. I think it's just not American. I don't, this is just wrong to have to subject anybody to it. I understand we're trying to keep kids safe. Bad things happen in this world, and I don't believe that fingerprinting 100% of the population is going to prevent bad things from happening in this world. It's not, so we're, it's naive to think that. So, I don't know, I've said enough, I guess.
Well, I think what we have in front of us is the policy as is or the policy minus that sentence. So I think that's what has to come.
Right.
Okay? So...
So we have to make a motion to remove the sentence?
Or make a motion to leave it as is, or to...
Well, you could have moved, moved to amend the first paragraph, third from last sentence, starting with the words, the school committee superintendent, principal. I think that's enough. Remove that from the policy and leave the rest as is. So I'll make that motion.
I will second it. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? So by voting yes, we are taking out that sentence. Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so we have three, still carries forward, three, me, Greg, Beth, and then two names. Three, well, three yeses, that's why I'm verifying it, because, so the three yeses removes that sentence from the policy.
Okay. And then you would need another motion to actually accept the policy.
As amended.
So then, would someone like to make a motion to accept the policy as amended and policy, let's just get the...
DDA.
DDA, thank you.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, that still carries forward, three to two. And did you get everyone on that? Great, thank you. Okay. All right, so we're moving on to 6.2, the Superintendent Summitive Evaluation. Is that me, or did you want to start us off, or...
I think that's you.
Oh, it's me! Great. All right, so I just want to preface this with, back in March, we did our mid-cycle, mid-year review, so we're going to have to look at next year's timing of everything because it's June and we're coming up with the summitive, and I just have to say, not much had changed between the March and June.
Sure.
So we do want to say that you are doing a great job, so please continue to do that good job, and that we hope to just continue moving forward and improving in our district because there's always room to improve.
Always room to improve.
And just to go over everything, I'm just going to do the evaluation notes that I've put at the end. It says, overall, our superintendent has a successful year as we reviewed the four standards. He demonstrates exemplary and instructional leadership for our administrators, teachers, and staff and schoolwork for this year. Under management and operations, we again have fallen with that proficient towards exemplary, so continue with the great work there. Again, we've had comments on he gains valuable experience in the area of family and community engagement, which is critical as we've moved forward with what could possibly be town budget constraints of next year and possible construction at the high school. And I really want to commend, and I see this in all of the reviews, about his attendance at many school-related events and town functions, which really just shows your dedication to the schools and the community, and again, exemplary rating for that standard. And then lastly, under professional culture, we know that education is continually evolving and that you continue to learn, adapt, and make changes where necessary, and that you're definitely open to input from others, and all of that just leads to outstanding work from you, and we hope that you continue to do that for us. And so we just, we got to, come on, just look at it quickly.
Sure.
Anyone have any other comments that they'd like to add to that?
Well done, well done, well done, just look at it.
Yeah, but like I said, you may just have to review the timing for next year and think about how that goes.
Wouldn't you get it done before, like, right after holidays?
You certainly could do your mid-cycle in February. If we were to do that, we'd just have to think about our budget season and how we want to modify that. You can do both.
Because if we got the paperwork in January, we can maybe try to get it the first, right in February, that first meeting.
And then we also have February break, so that also throws us off.
The other thing was maybe try and add a meeting in February just to do budget. That would free up time to do this in a regular meeting, take the budget and move it, because it's getting more and more complex as we, every year or so.
Yeah, that's fine.
So just, I mean, just something that we'll talk about when we get our...
But it's going to be here before we know it, right?
Well, yeah, that's why we'll do it early enough where we've got a plan in place.
Yep. All right, so we'll just need a motion to accept the end of your review or the summit...
The date on the...
For the academic year 2013, 2014.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay. Okay, hearing none, that carries forward, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let me just sign this for you, and then you have your copy.
We'll make copies.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so let's see. All right, we're going to continue moving on. We have 7.2, the MASC/MASS joint conference early bird registration.
Yes, in your packet you have just an informational letter, and it gives you the conference for this upcoming November, and if you put in your reservations now, you get an early bird special, I think, before July 15th.
That makes sense.
I'm going to try to do this one this year.
Are you going to try to?
Yeah.
I want us to think about if we go the Thursday dinner. I don't, although it isn't our commissioner speaking this year, but I think that sometimes the talking with other towns and getting together with them might be more productive than just sitting at a table while somebody's talking to us.
And the famous Jimmy Tinkle is the...
Well, I know there is a comedian this year.
Well, usually, in the past...
A real comedian, not one that we're paying, you know?
Well, in the past, we've done Wednesday keynote, and Thursday night, we usually do it on our own.
Yeah. Oh, is it?
Yeah. We do the keynote, we've done the keynote in the past, Wednesday night keynote. We usually do a Thursday afternoon.
They have a Thursday, okay.
Well, what, what do they...
It's usually a law firm that hosts a sort of a mixture.
Okay, so I guess I'm thinking Wednesday, I don't know, think about it.
Wednesday, Wednesday's the, usually your keynote.
Yes, Wednesday.
Yeah.
Thursday, Thursday they do the network, it's a buffet luncheon. That's where we get a lot, where we really start interacting with a lot of our colleagues. Thursday night, there's usually that reception at that Italian restaurant that everybody goes to.
And I guess that's why I'm wondering if the Wednesday, you know, you guys think about it, because I, I'm fine with whatever, but think about if that's what we want to do Wednesday, or if we're better off getting together with other towns.
I mean, I wouldn't mind going to something, maybe taking a ride for one of these days, but they'll usually go for the whole weekend, the whole time, and Gordon does it, but...
Thursday it stays the big day.
Thursday is the big day because...
Thursday you have most of your workshops and...
What they've done, and it's a TBA, and it's, they're trying, and we discussed this when we were in New Orleans, they're trying to come up with a Saturday plan, a Saturday program that keeps people there. Right now, it's just the boot camp for new members where they do the charting, the course. They're actually trying to get a program together to keep everybody there on Saturday, because everybody bolts Wednesday, Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon, true.
And what they've done this year, and I'm thankful for this, is they've taken the delegate conference and moved it from Friday afternoon to Wednesday afternoon, which is really nice. That's the way it used to be, but they moved it to Friday to try and keep everybody there.
Right.
And what they found was delegates weren't showing up for the conference.
Right.
For the convention.
Do we have to approve this, or?
No.
No, it's just informational.
It is a nice thing to go.
Yes, we need to know tonight if you're going to go.
No, they, they have to sign up tonight, though.
No.
No, no, no.
No. It's just an informational, so.
It is a nice, it is a nice thing.
No, they, they'd have to sign up tonight, though.
No.
No, no, no.
July 15.
July 15.
It's just, just an informational.
We don't vote on it anyway. We've got a budget for that.
Right.
Yeah.
It was just, it came to me and I gave it to Gordon and I said, just throw it on the agenda.
We usually do.
Because it is a good cost savings if anybody's, you know.
Right.
And we'll, you know, whoever decides to go, we'll get together and we'll figure out a plan accordingly.
Yeah.
But it is, I think, and I haven't seen any of the, they're still developing all the breakout sessions and everything, but I'm thinking it's going to be very heavily steered towards Park.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, because, again, I'll say, we are in a very good position here in East Long Meadow. We're a lot better than a lot of other districts in this state, so kudos to us.
All right, so we'll kind of have that discussion till we can. All right, so we're moving on to what is our last one here, which is 7.3, our revised policy of IJND.
Okay. The policy subcommittee met recently and we took a look at our policy on access to electronic media under curriculum and instruction. And in the middle portion of the first page, does everybody have this packet? We added the bullet point that is in bold there, educating minors about appropriate online behavior, including interacting with other individuals on social networking websites and in chat rooms, cyber bullying awareness and response.